Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lesbrunt, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lesbrunt.
Here.
Treasurer Pierce.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Clerk Slater, here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its whole with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
Motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have no presentations this evening, so that brings us right to public comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Try and state your name and your address for record keeping. And try not to all jump the podium at once. Is there anyone online, Ms. Brunt?
If any of our Zoom participants would like to participate in the public comment, please raise your hand. If you are participating via phone, please dial star nine and we'll wait a moment. I don't think anyone would like to.
Approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion or discussion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions, Article seven, motion or discussion?
Make a motion to approve. Support.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That brings us to Article eight, unfinished business. Trustee Nordhook raised this issue in a previous meeting. This brings us back to the Peace Park hunting proposed changes to the ordinance. Manager Swayze?
Great, thank you. So earlier this summer, the board discussed reworking the Peace Park hunting regulations. So archery hunting is currently allowed in Cascade Township Peace Park as an artifact of the MDNR trust fund grant that we've received for the purchase of the property. So we reviewed our options with legal counsel, and right now we believe the best option for the township board is to consider is actually to remove the Peace Park hunting regulations from the ordinance and replace them with the ability of the township board to adopt hunting rules and regulations by resolution. So the first step in the process would be to set a public hearing for the ordinance amendment, which we're recommending be set for Wednesday, September fourteenth, at the regular township board meeting. So once the public hearing is set, you know, is that the right date? That's gonna bug me.
Yes.
Yep, it is. Alright, I don't know, I was thinking it was the tenth for some reason. So once the public hearing is set, the board will be able to adopt the ordinance amendment at the meeting. Or once the public hearing is held, the board will be able to adopt the ordinance amendment at the meeting, or any future meeting of the board. So we also included a draft administrative policy for hunting regulations in Peace Park. And that is certainly subject to revision based on any conversation that the board has tonight about what they like or don't like in that specific administrative policy. So in the packet, I included the draft ordinance for you, as well as the draft hunting administrative policy. So if the board wishes forward to move forward with the adoption of the new Peace Park hunting ordinance, first thing you'd have to do is set the public hearing. So you don't pass the ordinance tonight. Just need to set the public hearing, again recommending September fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. I'm also recommending the board have a conversation tonight about the changes and the proposed regulations. So any tweaks that the board wants to see can be made prior to the final adoption of the policy and ordinance. So the adoption of a new Peace Park hunting ordinance amendment itself comes with minimal costs, really the staff time printing and publishing to get us through the process. So with that, happy to answer any questions may have.
On A, Ben, as we've gone back and forth, should we add only bow hunting or hunting with a crossbow or compound bow? Does that need to be added? Since a lot of hunters do use compound bows? In A, in the ordinance?
And also, a lot of people do have permits for crossbows, especially handicapped.
Right, and that's listed, crossbow is listed, but compound bow isn't. So, and in A, the file, well, we crossed out the following, under two eighty-four, two eighty-two dash twenty-four hunting?
Yeah.
On page one, A, only bow hunting or hunting with a crossbow, and should we add or compound bow?
So, and then, so to look at, if you get into the administrative policy as well, number five says only archery permitted. And that says only recurve bows, long bows, compound bows and crossbows may be discharged in Peace Park.
Right, I just, so. I just thought we'd make them match up, so there's.
So my question is, yeah, do we want to make them match up and say both of that in both places? Or in the ordinance, do we want to say only hunting by archery will be permitted and then further define that in the?
I think that would suffice as well, yeah, that'd be clear, and there wouldn't be any.
Question came up last time whether we allow participants in the park when, after we've issued permits, and the answer was yes. I know that's, that's a lot of acreage in there, but I don't, should we allow people to use a park when people are out there shooting compound bows and longbows and crossbows?
So I had that question out to our insurance carrier right now. I will say that most of the other research that I did, they do allow regular people to use the park. In fact, there's a lot of places that allow other people to use the parks while they're firearm hunting as well. But I did see, you know, a couple where it was put back. You know, I think if that's a way that the township board wants to consider going, you know, we also, in the regulations now, open it up to several different periods. You know, whereas in the current ordinance, the hunting was only permitted November first and November twenty-first. Now we have three periods, which is October first to October thirty-first, November first and November thirty, and December first to January first. It's an awful long time to have the park closed to regular people and just have it be used for fifteen hunters. So if that's something we want to look at, I think we need to rectify those two sides of the question.
What, I don't know, there's people walking around, I worry about that a little bit. We haven't had any accidents so far, but I'd be interested in what our insurance company has to say too.
What does the signage actually say, or what will it say? Notifying the public that hunting is going on.
Yeah, so I'll be honest, I know we put up signs, I don't know what they say right now, so, but that, also, we asked the insurance carrier about recommendations for signage.
Okay.
So we'll have a response from them.
So people are fairly warned.
I think it said, according to our buildings and grounds. Manager, he said, hunting prohibited unless, unless you have a permit or something like that. No hunting without a permit.
Right, but we're talking about other people being in the park while hunting is allowed?
I'm just telling you what these signs have said for the past years. As far as what I was told.
Okay.
I have a few comments.
That's important issue.
One change I'd like to make is that archery season does go into January, so maybe that third one, which is probably the least popular one, December into January be one unit. So December and remaining season in January. Two would be to remove the blaze orange requirement. Nobody uses blaze orange in archery, it's all camouflage and the state of Michigan allows that as well. Three is I want all of the hunters that are successful with their harvest to report it, so we have some management information to document. Four, I guess I'd like to see a list, do we currently take a list of names of people we give these permits to now, Ben?
We do, yes.
Okay, so then I would like to continue that, so we know who's in the park. As far as safety, as an old bow hunter, and I haven't done it in twenty years plus, but I enjoyed it when people were out walking around, because they kind of bring the deer over to me, but my.
Or a Great Dane.
They were great out there, nice dogs out there, but most archers are shooting twenty yards or less, so, I mean, from here to the back wall, and that's a long shot for a good archer. They, if you're good at archery, most of your shots are very close, so.
I have a question, are tree stands permitted?
And it gives us more safety by shooting down.
Yeah, it was in there, I didn't see it.
It is in there, you just can't have them for, I think it's like twenty-four hours before your hunt or something, it is in there. It's in there, yeah.
So basically says, so the old ordinance says no equipment may be left in the park. Anything found left in the park will be removed and confiscated by the township. So essentially, you know, that would be, you would have to bring it in and take it out as you come in and leave. Seeing if that translated into the administrative rules.
So I've become a little disenchanted with the way this process has been going, and that's why I brought this up to begin with. And then this morning at a governance meeting, I found out more information that makes me even more unhappy with the process. A couple meetings ago, I had asked if, I asked Ben if we advertise what day we issue these permits. And his response was, we don't have to, they're standing in line at five AM. I didn't want to embarrass him that day by saying, well, how does everybody know what day to stand in line? But now this morning, when I asked if we are going to put an ad out or notice out that we're going to accept deer hunting applications from September first to September eleven, he said all the permits are already issued for this season. And I said, I don't remember seeing a posting for that. So I'm tired of this corrupt way of handing out hunting passes. Why do we have to be corrupt doing this?
Lack of communication and transparency.
It just isn't necessary, so I want to revoke all those hunting passes that were passed out back in April for this year's season. I want everybody to go through a fair, open, and honest permitting process by putting in an application and drawing a lottery. Because not everybody knew back in April that they had to be in line to get it. So I'm tired of that process, I want it open, fair, and honest. No more corruption. New sheriff in town, Timmy.
I would, Timmy, that's a strong word, I wouldn't call it corruption, it's something that evolved over, over a decade. I mean, I understand your point, and I agree that we should have a lottery, I totally agree. But I don't think we need to use words like corrupt, I don't think anything was intentionally done to, to, to do something against people, so.
Can we do it this year? It's August, what's today, August?
There's plenty of time to advertise for, to put in an application. I think this, doesn't the state do that with a lot of their special permits like elk and whatnot? They do that by a true lottery system.
Well, they do it for doe permits too, I think.
Yeah, I think.
I think you buy those over the counter now, they want to get rid of deer.
Yeah, but it's, at first, at first, we were doing that with turkey when turkey came back into the bear regime. They do it for the bear and the elk, but I'm just tired of it. It's, this is a simple little process, it doesn't have to be done in the dark of night.
Well, if you revoke permits from somebody who's been holding a permit since April or May or June, somebody's planning on hunting, you're gonna have some really mad people.
They can be as mad as they want to be, the process wasn't done properly, and it's going to be proper now. They have an opportunity, we'll notify them, they have an opportunity to put an application in. It's going to be fair, honest, and open.
Timing wise, Manager Swayze, if we were to, for this hunting season twenty-twenty-two, the way it is now, it's in an ordinance, correct?
Correct.
So that ordinance needs to be, or is that specific, does that not require an ordinance change, that particular part?
So the ordinance says that they'll be issued on a first come, first served basis. So the way they are issued now was based on the ordinance that's in place. There would be nothing that would prevent us from, so if we, I mean, one of the things we could do is leave those fifteen alone and then issue more permits based on the new process that we're putting in place this year.
Was there enough time to, enough board meetings in between now and the beginning of hunting season to change it so that this year is fair and everyone gets an opportunity, everyone, we notice it to residents and then give them an opportunity to apply instead of the same old?
So the, I mean, the way that, the way the process works now is that if everything goes smoothly, the ordinance can be in place on September fourteenth.
So that, that's enough time, correct?
Yeah, so we could advertise it now, I mean, the advertisements that we put out now would, you know, have to reflect that in anticipation of the process changing at the September fourteenth meeting to encourage people to apply. But yeah, there would be time to do something this year.
And those fifteen people, however they heard of it, however long they've been doing it, they could apply this year also? I would support that if there's time.
What's, what's the, what's the, what would, have we been using as the, as the hunting season in Peace Park? Is that the November one, two?
November one, so currently in the ordinance, it's November one through November twenty-one.
That's just it, those three weeks?
Yep.
So, and, and we might change it to have multiple time periods, and then issue permits by time period?
Correct.
You could do that, yep.
So that's certainly an option, yep.
Why couldn't you, since the time is so close, do a hybrid model this year? And let the fifteen that have the permit stand, but add a couple other, like the October, December, and do a hybrid so that everyone's happy?
Because you can't make everyone happy, and you might as well do it right, instead of hobbling along. They got a pretty good deal, however, I don't know how you hear about that, but I think there's a lot of people who would love the opportunity.
And currently, the permits are given out to anybody, not just Cascade residents, correct?
Correct.
How many people get turned down?
It's first come, first served, fifteen people.
But, I mean.
Number sixteen?
Yeah, I mean, is, yeah, how many do we have that want permits that don't get them?
I don't know.
Well, I don't disagree with you. I think, I think the first come, first served, it should be done on a lottery, and everybody gets a fair chance. But I think one of the other things that you said before that I agreed with was if you take a deer, then you don't get to go back, and then somebody else gets a chance of a permit, right?
If the state gives them two licenses, I, you know, I'm good with them going back and getting another deer, as long as it's within their permit period.
Whatever the state allows them, but then when they've done it, maybe, you know, if we go to three hunting periods instead of two, the next time, you don't let the person that hunted and got two deer, you give somebody else a chance.
Right, so it wouldn't be the number of deer, it would be the window allotted, the time slot.
Right.
So hopefully you get as many as you can in that.
And their quota, because if they hit their quota, like first two days, let's, let's.
Then they're done, turn their permit back, yeah. If the state says they can take four deer, let them take four deer, November one to November thirty period, let them take four deer.
So what do we do then? We followed the existing ordinance, and I agree with your suggestion to amend it. I like that, but what do we do that, with the ordinance that we followed and issued the permits already?
Change it.
They are issued for November one.
Yeah.
We have September, October, so there's over sixty days to give those people notice that they're, they have to, their permit is no longer valid. They have to go through the lottery system.
Okay with that.
They got theirs in the dark of night, that's not fair.
Literally, we found out about it through the background, just people mentioning it, so even, there's, we can put it on our website and our e-newsletter easily, and that's way more fair than what, whatever has been going on up to this time.
Would you like a motion to revoke those permits?
Or a motion to proceed.
We need a public.
Yeah, but that's coming up, it'd be a motion to get the ball rolling and whatever terms are proper, so that the ordinance can be amended in time for the twenty-twenty-two season.
I think we should, Grace, I think we should, we should take our suggestions, like Timmy has good suggestions, and email them to Ben, so he puts them in the draft ordinance, so we can see it ahead of time.
Hundred percent.
To the public, then when we, then we can give Ben until September fourteenth to get it right when we have the public hearing, then we can approve it then.
As long as we can get it for twenty-twenty-two, there has to be a public hearing anyways, however you want to do it is great. I just don't want to miss the window because there's only so many board meetings.
And we could change the September one to September eleven and say, for twenty-twenty-two only, the period will be September twenty through twenty-eight, in a subsequent year, September one through eleven, to file for the lottery. I mean, we could still, we could still do the lottery, just change that September one to eleven date to, again, something subsequent to September fourteen, and then say in subsequent years, it's the filing period or the application period is September one to eleven.
And I, I get that the fifteen people who, who've been hunting there and enjoy it and look forward to it, that that's a disappointment to them. But I hope that they, those people would understand that it, that it's a park, that it's for all residents, and that that it should be a fair process.
I think everybody agrees. And one thing, we have to clarify though, are we going to still keep the multiple time periods? Are we going to limit the time periods to, you know, November one to November twenty-one, November twenty-two to December thirty-one? Are we going to have multiple periods? And then do we do lotteries for each period?
Yeah.
What do we want to tell Ben? Because if he's going to draft this, we should give him the guidance.
Well, I think we have to do a lottery to be fair, we can't do it for just one period, not the other.
Sure, sure, I agree, Jim, but I'm saying, how many periods do we want?
We want to increase the number of periods.
I think you just want three periods, October, November, December, with the remaining of end of January, just three periods.
And then there's the idea to issue fifteen permits for each period?
For each period.
Each period.
And then we recycle them as people reach their quota of deer, they get their quota, and they turn them in, and then we can pull the remaining for that period.
That way you're getting forty-five hunters in there with different skill levels, you're going to take more deer.
Should we have a deer minimum?
Whatever the state allows them.
No, I'm joking, but I hate, the guy looking for the trophy book who just sits there, we don't need him.
To give Ben some guidance, if you are selected in one lottery, does that, one, for one period, should that person be removed for others? Or can they, so one person could get all three?
They could.
Depends on, I guess, but let's just say if you've got over, oh, that'd be forty-five spots, right, fifteen times three? So in theory, it wouldn't be that difficult to say, well, if you, if we have more than forty-five applicants, we would know that ahead of time, so once you are selected, then you take your name out, you know what I mean? Like if there's over forty-five, then it's more fair.
And, and, I mean, my thought was going to be that people would submit one lottery application and rank which period they wanted. So if they get pulled and they wanted, they get pulled first and they want in first period, that's awesome, they got it. If you get pulled thirty-seventh, and you wanted the first period, the ball that's left is the second or third period, you get whatever's next on your. And if we have less than forty-five applicants, you know, we can ask them if they want, you know, multiple, multiple periods.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, and then this'll have a slower start this year, and the next year we'll hear from all the suburban residents who are anti-hunting. But at least it's not, at least it's more transparent and it's out there and people know.
I just don't understand why we can't do a hybrid model. If I was a hunter with a permit ready to go, I would be so mad if I found out my permit was revoked.
I think I would, you got to look at the big picture and the greater good for what's.
It's a sixty-day notice.
They can reapply, it's just.
And if they don't get it?
They don't get it.
They're gonna be super mad.
And anyone who did, who wants something that doesn't, that doesn't get it, has some disappointment, but.
In the future, are we gonna talk about our other township properties possibly doing the same thing?
It'll be a little.
The Furton Street Park.
But that'll be complicated because it's a smaller area, it's a much smaller, and it's surrounded by homes.
It's a, it's a subject matter for future.
You might put four permits in there.
We might have a resident that has an interest in that in the audience, I don't know. It's on the table, remember we're doing the deer count?
I make the motion that we set the public hearing for September fourteenth, and I would suggest that all suggestions should be emailed to Ben, so, you know, if we have new ideas, Timmy has a lot, but to make sure they aren't missed, it'd be nice to have them documented for Ben, to give him some better direction.
And is the way that's ordered, just to clarify, that would allow the process to be changed for the twenty-twenty-two season? Okay.
Support.
So this is a motion by trustee McDonald to.
Set the public.
Thank you. Set the public hearing to proceed with modification of the deer hunting ordinance for Peace Park, supported by trustee Kessel. Does this require a roll call? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then compensation for township boards and commissions. Manager Swayze, you want to?
Yeah, so, at a board meeting in July, the board directed staff to evaluate the pay for the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals members. So currently, our Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals members are paid forty-five dollars per meeting that they attend, and the chairs make fifty dollars per meeting. We weren't able to determine when the pay rate went into effect, however, could determine that the same rate of pay has been in place since our current payroll system was put in place in two thousand and seven. So in reviewing the other Kent County municipalities in the area, we found a wide range of pay for Planning Commission and ZBA members. The low end of scale was East Grand Rapids, where members are not paid for their service, and the high end was Grand Rapids Township, where Planning Commissioners are paid a hundred and fifty dollars per meeting, and the ZBA members are paid a hundred dollars per meeting. So I attached to the staff report, the information that was put together, and thank you to Human Resources Director Katie Morosky for doing that. So while within the range of pay for the comparative communities, we were able to reach Cascade Township's definitely at the low end. Should be noted that we do only pay for meetings that are held and attended, no pay is given for meetings that are canceled, or no pay is given for meetings that are held but not attended by members. So for two thousand and twenty-two, we budgeted nine thousand dollars for Planning Commissioner slash ZBA wages. As recommended by trustee Norduk, if the board wanted to move that direction, whatever the pay is established at, that could be added to the township wage system to ensure it's adjusted by the CPI COLA increase each year, as is done for other wages at the township. So as mentioned, the PCA, PCZBA budget is typically nine thousand dollars a year, though it's rare for the township to use all the funds, and several meetings are canceled each year. Any adjustment to the two thousand and twenty-two wages could be made with a simple budget amendment, if it's even needed, there's a chance that it won't be needed. That I'm happy to answer, any questions may have? Trustee Timmy, where'd you get your ninety dollars?
Well, I think we've already been over this, Ken. I went to the township, the Michigan Township Association website and tried to poke through that, which was not very clear, but I got it off of there. Now, Ben's done more research, and he's come up with zero at East Green Rapids, which I think is too low, and he got one fifty at, was it?
Your town.
Your township, which I think is too high. So I'm not going to pick the number, I'm going to leave you guys to pick that number, but I have recommended ninety.
I think seventy-five is good. Somewhere in the middle.
Right, Ben?
Yes.
I, I know that you are sitting here now as a member of the board, so you don't have a vote in it. But do you have a figure that you think would be fair as the manager of the township?
I would say you couldn't pay me enough to do what you guys do, so I think either of mine would pick is probably fair, but, you know, if I was looking at it from a professional perspective, you know, trying to make sure.
That's what I'm asking.
Doing accordingly, I think somewhere in the, you know, somewhere in the eighty, ninety, hundred dollar range is appropriate, is probably appropriate for an initial adjustment. You know, that would bring us again, never want to be the lowest, you never want to be the highest, but that would break, break us well in the range of our comparable.
Thank you for your professional estimate. So it sounds like, Timmy, you are pretty much right on the money with your recommendation.
Don't tell anybody.
I won't, you're never right.
Ben, can you give us the background of compensation for certain committees or commissions and not for others, and where that comes from?
Yeah, certainly. So the zoning and a planning and zoning enabling act allows for townships to compensate zoning board of appeals and planning commissions as they see fit, so it's obviously permissive, right? So you don't have to compensate that, but allow us to do that. DDA's technically can be compensated as well, however, our bylaws for our DDA and Cascade Township specifically says that they'll serve without payment. Uh, so if there was any intention of the township to compensate that, their bylaws would actually have to be amended first in order to allow that. Um, and then we have a whole host of other committees that are advisory in nature, right? So those committees don't have any statutory backing on them, they don't have any statutory responsibilities. Those committees have been developed because the township board is looking for, uh, people in the community to help, uh, make decisions and make recommendations. So I think there is a clear distinction between the planning commission, ZBA and DDA, which have clear statutory responsibilities. And clear, um, ramifications on carrying out those responsibilities. Uh, where the other committees, not saying they don't do a lot of work, uh, because they do, uh, but it's a little bit different just because they're, they're advisory in nature. And they're not created out of any statute.
The planning commission, what they have done in the last year to get the township back on track as far as. Enforcement and making sure developers are doing the right thing and keeping the township out of. Trouble going forward. I think a hundred fifty wouldn't be too much, but. I defer to you guys. And the only other thing is our, I get that, the rationale, and I just, it's. Nobody's making money off these and I, and I don't think anyone's doing it for the money. Um, but the only thing that is a disappointment is that we've got some people working really hard that, um. On the committees that are advisory only and don't get compensated. And I just, um. Maybe we can kind of come up with a way to recognize their service to Cascade.
Let's, let's take this one step at a time.
Well, no, I'm thinking like a, I, I'm not saying add, open the door to compensation for everything, I'm just saying, I'm thinking of. Ginny Wani, our parks chair, and the amount of hours she's putting in. At the different parks and getting us up to speed and. I just don't want her to feel slighted in the fact that. It's more to recognize the hard work, so I guess I'm just saying thank you to the other people who aren't compensated, who are serving Cascade also.
I, I couldn't say it better.
You probably could.
No, I, I couldn't say it better. You have a lot of volunteers out there that are absolutely priceless. But moving this forward as the first step in recognition and compensation. I would make a motion. That we move compensation to ninety dollars per meeting. With the chair getting one hundred dollars per meeting. And of course, uh, as Ben already noted, uh, treated the same as all other earners in the township. With the cost of living increases.
For both, both ZBA and.
For ZBA also?
Yeah, I, 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 I would like to agree, except I don't think the ZBA does as much, I mean, I'm on the ZBA. And our meeting can be very quick, and I was on planning commission for nine years and we, we put a lot more time in, so. I think the ZBA is pretty good as it is, and I, my, I don't, no offense to my fellow ZBA members, but I, I do agree with the. The planning commission going up, but I don't know if the ZBA needs to, needs to change, John. Like, those can be long meetings too, but they can be very short.
How many times does this, how often do they meet?
Almost every month now.
The ZBA?
Yeah, just once a month, not twice. That's the other reason. We only meet once a month, not twice.
Okay, I rescind or I modify my motion to be the, uh. Plan Commission or whatever it is.
Plan Commission.
Yeah.
And leave the ZBAs.
And we can, we can address that in the future if we need to.
I support.
Just like all the other committees that we rely upon to give us guidance, make sure the township stays in proper path.
Well, and the ZBAs have the meet, number of meetings that the planning commission does, so I think it's only fair that they not be compensated the same. So I support John's motion to, for the ninety dollars an hour with the CPI index included for planning commission members. Ninety per meeting, yes, per meeting, per member.
Should the CPI be in July for zoning?
Um, I don't think it's relevant.
It suggests we added for zoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's, it's up to John, it's his motion.
Okay, well, add that to my motion.
And I'll support the CPI for zoning.
I'm glad this is recorded, so we can look and see what we've done.
So that's a motion by trustee Shipley to modify the compensation for planning commissioners to ninety dollars per meeting. And to modify both planning commission members and ZBA members, uh, the, take into account the adjustment for inflation.
Could I suggest that trustee McDonald and North Hope recuse themselves from the vote? Consider personally benefiting from it.
Good point, again.
You could suggest it, but can, and then I think you just have to leave it out there, right?
Supervisor, did that also include the additional small bonus for the chairperson?
Oh, I'm sorry, and, and the ten dollars, uh, additional for the chair of the planning commission. Whomever that may be.
I'll recuse myself, although I. I limited it to, to staying the same, uh, so me, my fellows, ZBA members, uh, but I, I, I will recuse myself.
Supervisor Lasprenz. For, um, taking minutes, could you please re-say that again?
I'm gonna have to write it. Yeah, that's called rewind, I don't know. Okay, fine, I'll try it again. Um. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by. Trustee McDonald to increase the per-meeting compensation to planning commissioners to ninety dollars per meeting. And then. An additional ten dollars per meeting for the planning commission chair and then. That both of those, um, ZBA and township and, and planning commission. Would in, increase annually based on the. CPI. Consistent with township employees.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Norduk. Article nine, new business, zero six zero, twenty twenty-two. This is the township property surrounding this library and Wisner Center, the potential, um, gardens. It to be changed into a potential gardens and activity space. Andrew Swayze?
Great, thank you. So, uh, library director Vanessa Walstro was, uh, supposed to be in attendance tonight, unfortunately. Uh, has some family things she needed to attend to, so I'm going to try to appropriately, uh, take her spot. Uh, so earlier this year, the library staff came to a township board meeting, uh, to present a conceptual design and budget for proposed outdoor gardens and activity space. At the grounds of the Cascade Library. Uh, and at the time, the direction we received from the township board was to solicit feedback from the public. Uh, related to the use of space. Uh, so our communication team in partnership with the KDL staff developed educational materials. In a survey regarding the project, all of the project materials, including the survey, were put onto the township webpage dedicated to the project. And to promote the survey, the township utilized a bunch of channels, including an article and link in our township summer print newsletter. Uh, of course, put it on the township website, it was promoted on the township and the Kent District Library Facebook pages. Uh, we featured it in township e-newsletter, and we had signage at Township Hall, at the Cascade Library, and at the Fourth of July Book Sale as well. Uh, so I included the survey results, uh, in your packet, uh, as well as various comments that were received by the public. Uh, most prominent of the responses, ninety-two point nine-six percent indicated they would support the use of the space for the project. So as I mentioned, uh, included the survey response data, as well as the project narrative and conceptual design budget. So it's clear from the survey responses that the community would support the use of the property for the purpose. Uh, the Friends of the Library has committed to fund phase one of the project and they're currently exploring funding for the remainder. Of the project, including Kent County ARPA funds, donations and grants. Uh, the KDL staff presented the project and survey results to the DDA at their August meeting. Uh, and indications that DDA supports the use of the land for the project. Uh, we'll note the DDA has been identified as potential contributor for phase two of the project. Uh, but no funding commitment has been requested or made on that. I mentioned, Vanessa isn't able to attend tonight. Uh, so we're not, uh, being asked to fund the project, only to allow for the use of the space for the project. Uh, the indications are that the funding's being sought for the professional maintenance of the project. For the first two years after completion to instill the establishment of the gardens. After the first two years, the buildings and grounds department would potentially take over the maintenance responsibilities. Uh, however, it's anticipated to be negligible due to the native nature of the project. Um, and through those first two years, we would have the. Train our building and ground staff on how to appropriately, uh, maintain the, the native plants. Uh, maintenance materials, you know, we're probably. Bark and my, minor things, hopefully be included in the annual library budget, uh, with the other dosing and grounds maintenance costs. Uh, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can you put phase one on the overhead? So then phase one is going to take up about, uh. Half. Of that yard space.
Yeah, so you can kind of see it a little bit more here, if you look at the overall master plan.
Where is phase two going to be?
So phase one. So phase two is the pavilion area and improvements north of the existing woods. Uh, so phase one is a preliminary use area adjacent to the northwest side of the library. Uh, so really the, the, the pavilion part of that sketch that I showed you, um, is phase two. Uh, and there's two smaller phases, phase three, uh, which is basically some native plantings. Uh, on the building, north side of the building facing the detention basin. And then phase four, natural area improvements, basically some prairie grass. Uh, but the way the friends of the library have been talking, they've been talking about phase one. And really phase two, phase three and phase four, all as part of phase two, uh, just because the last two phases are, are pretty minor in nature.
Can you show me on the map where phase two, three and four are to be?
So phase one would be essentially be this area, except for the, uh, completion of the, uh, the pavilion area. As phase two, phase three would be these plantings, uh, along the building here. Phase four would be, uh, the prairie plantings in the, uh, retention, retention basin.
So all of the things marked twelve and thirteen, that's going to just stay natural?
Uh, so the idea is to, uh, do native prairie plantings, um, yeah, so natural, but. I'd say enhance natural with, uh, native plantings.
I went out and walked this yesterday with Vanessa, because I had to get a grasp of the size. So the area there where you see the trees is the present trees and a lot of those, uh, sidewalks that you see. Are kind of sidewalks around what's there already with a couple of perennial gardens. And an area that they are going to pave off to one side. The phase two with, um, I personally like the amphitheater is actually walking over to that natural hill. Which is where you can put the amphitheater. A lot of this green area is going to stay just where it is. And the hill down behind that they're talking about native plantings. Well, I strongly suggest it's already green, leave it alone, but they want to put in, um, things that are going to environmentally grow. And not need much maintenance, all that sort of thing. So, um. It's kind of putting sidewalks around what's there. And then some addition.
Does it affect the Fourth of July celebration?
No. That whole space over there, that lovely green area when it rains a lot. Is still available. It's not even going to really come on to that part.
Did the, wouldn't, sorry, I wouldn't say it doesn't affect it, but it doesn't prevent us from holding Fourth of July.
Doesn't affect it much.
Did the Friends of the Library apply for ARPA grant?
They did.
Do we have any word back when those may be? Decided?
Uh, so the. In true Kent County fashion, so the initial, uh, timeline indicated that they'd be reviewing in April and starting to, uh, do a lot money in September. I did have a communication with somebody at the county a couple of days ago, and they're not even halfway through review yet, so. Don't know, um. Exactly when it'll come. They, they did say they received about three hundred applications, so, uh, which is a lot, but less than I had anticipated. But I, I don't know for certain.
I have a question, Ben. Um. Is the funds dependent upon us taking action tonight and approving the use of this property?
From the Friends of the Library?
Or not from Friends of Library, but from the county.
Yeah, so if the township decided this is, wasn't something that they wanted to, uh, pursue, um, the ARPA funds wouldn't, wouldn't be.
However, if, if, uh, the ARPA funds were to become available and we decided to go forward with this, that would be okey-dokey.
And that is, is it, is this in perpetuity, or can we rescind our permission if we want to?
Um, so, you know, really. There would, there would be nothing on the front end that would reserve, at least for phase one, right? For us to, you know, decide sometime in the future that we didn't want to have it anymore. It gets a little wonky when you start having. Um, you know, grants and ARPA funds and that kind of stuff, which is why we're having a discussion about, you know, hunting regulations in Peace Park. Because we made that commitment when we accepted those grant funds to allow hunting in that park in perpetuity, so. If it got to the point where, um, you know, there was, you know, a grant agreement, grant funds available, I'm sure. Uh, Kent County is going to want some type of commitment from the township that the, the project will, will remain. Um, but in terms of phase one, um. I guess I'd want to give the Friends of the Library the upfront, you know, notice that the township reserves the right to, you know, redevelop this project if needed. Um, legal, I don't think there would be anything that would stop the country.
Essentially giving use, giving them permission to modify the property that we own, right?
Uh, the only question I have, and, and Ben, I guess it wasn't clear on that, was on a going maintenance. Now, if they went through and did all, all the phase of this. This is going to require a nickel or two to maintain. And the first two years, I understand that the developer, professional developer is going to be maintaining it, is that an additional cost?
Uh, yeah, so that's an additional cost. Now, the, the indication from them, you know, based on how they designed the project is. The plantings themselves are going to require minimal maintenance, that's the idea behind the native planning. But when you're talking about things, putting a pavilion in place, putting sidewalks in place, things that become tangible. You know, those things eventually need to be replaced or whatnot.
Well, absolutely. It's like our pathways, you know, we, we paved those, but we can't ignore them and it's going to cost maintenance going down the road. But we have no idea yet on nickels and dimes for the maintenance.
Uh, no, no.
That's an important thing to know, but I'm excited about the way they're doing this. I'm not excited about the. Amphitheater, but I like the pavilion.
This, this plan is, this plan is reminiscent of the. Library. We used to nickname.
Scales way back.
But it wasn't, the library, the library, Friends of Library, they went out and did, you're right, but they went out and did their own separate. Hired their own, got it exactly where they wanted, and it was the pavilion, because it gives them more use and it kind of matches the space. And then somebody internal staff put the amphitheater back in.
Well, God bless the Friends of Library, because once again, they're volunteers and we wouldn't be America without their volunteers.
And I don't think it's for staff to stick that. No, the, the library came up with a great plan that they're excited about.
I, I would have no problem going forward and saying, go ahead and plan on doing what you want with the township property. But I would have a problem with us not reviewing it phase by phase by phase as we go along.
But, and just to clarify, Ben, tonight we're just voting on approving the use, yes or no? And then we're still going to have, um, I don't want to call it veto power, but review, review capabilities to. A- and to coll- collaborate with the library, Friends of Library, so.
And I think.
I think that's the intention, but I think it would be good to include that in, you know, a motion that's made, to say that, uh, the township, uh, board would like to review. Uh, any, you know, final project design before it's put in place.
And the library, Vanessa did a great job, she was really. And the library, Vanessa did a great job. She was really excited and they had a professional planner. As supervisor, I don't want some staff member to come in and add or change their plan or try to steer the ship a little differently. So let's just stick with, I don't think, I don't think anyone who's got a. No, it's not for anyone internally to change. If it wants to be spoken about at the board level, that's fine, but not inside additions and changes. That's not an economic development issue.
Before we go on to the future phases, I'd like to see how much use Phase One is getting and what the costs are before we go adding more.
And I brought it up before, you know, with Ada opening up their library and I like our library a lot better than Ada. They look way too commercial. But I would like to see an independent review of how many people use our library, where they come from, and how many people used our library and where they came from. I know it's water over the dam, but how many people used the library ten years ago or five years ago? Are we increasing?
KDL provides those statistics, Sean.
I don't trust KDL any more than I do the GRADA.
Then who can, then who can we believe? KDL has the statistics of who walks in the door and who goes online and they provided those in prior board packets. If we can't rely on the KDL, then who can we? John, they're the ones who.
That's why I mentioned Tom, an independent counter. And I don't, I don't know how they would do it. I'm not in that business.
Well, this is just a great asset for the community. It's a great asset for Cascade. Our library and our libraries are so important and this is a great asset. We have people who run it, who are, and volunteers who are really passionate about it. I make a motion that we approve use of the township property for library, outdoor gardens, and activity space as being presented by the Friends of the Library with final review and approval in the hands of the township board.
Oh, that sounds reasonable. As proposed by the Friends of the Library for final review by the board, not modification by internal staff.
I didn't add, but I added for approval.
I just wanna publicly clarify because it bothers me.
By the final review and approval by the board.
Yeah, I'm good with that, Tom. I'd still like to have a head count, but that's.
Support. Just one comment going back to trustee Norduck about wanting to review the project in between each phase. So the reason that it was phased out was specifically the funding issue, right? So Friends of the Library knew that they weren't gonna have enough money to fund it on the front end. If they come up with that funding on the front end, particularly if they're able to get the ARPA fund, they'll probably come back to the township board with a plan that builds the whole project at once. That'd be, that'd be great. I just, I wanna make that clear that, you know, the intention of the phasing was financial. It wasn't anything else.
And there was enthusiasm at the DDA, or interest by DDA, but I think there's some confusion about that it's related or similar part of that old plan from years ago, but.
And, and I have, I have no problem if they get funding. It's our tax dollars coming back to us. So that's cool. I'd still like to have a little bit more definitive, what's it gonna cost us going down the road?
So that was a motion by trustee McDonald to to approve the potential use of township property surrounding the library according to the Friends of the Library proposal.
Right, for library, outdoor gardens, and activity space.
Yep, for the library, outdoor gardens and space, and that was supported by trustee Shipley. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. Fire station number one, construction fire alarm bid package. Manager Swayze?
Great, thank you. So earlier this summer, the township board discussed releasing an early bid package for the fire station number one project. The reasoning for the early bird packet, package was extended procurement timelines for some roofing and electrical material and equipment that could directly impact the construction schedules, critical path and end date. So based on the discussion held by the township board, early, early package, bid package, there's a lot for membrane roofing, electrical switchgear, generator, and fire alarm. The bidding documents were released in early July and due July twenty sixth. At the August tenth township board meeting, the board approved the bids for roofing, electrical switchgear, and generator. The fire alarm vendors were issued an addendum that revised the specification to allow manufacturers beyond just hunting. Well, the bid due date for the fire alarm was extended to Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-two. We received three bids. The apparent low bidder on bid day was EPS at fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. However, after evaluating the submitted proposal, EPS was determined to be non-responsive because it didn't include installation of the fire alarm. They only include furnishing the fire alarm and equipment material. So because of that, the second low bidder on bid day is recommended. That's Riverside Integrated System and their bid value was twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. The budget value for this was thirty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. So that represents twenty-three point seven percent savings over the project estimate. So as I mentioned, the recommended, recommendation is for the bid to be awarded to Riverside Integrated Systems, who had the second low bid and they included the full scope. We do have our project team from Triangle on Zoom. Right, Chrissy? All right, you guys have any questions for Brienne or Nick there on Zoom tonight? Total current project estimates are ten point four million. And as we've talked about extensively the past six months, projects being paid through a combination of bond funds and cash on hand. With that, staff is making the recommendation to approve the bid warrant for fire alarm for the fire station number one project to Riverside Integrated Systems.
I got a question for Triangle out there in Zoom land. Have you worked with Riverside before and what has your experience with them?
Yes, we've worked with Riverside on numerous projects in West Michigan, including multiple K-12 projects. They've been very responsive and we feel very comfortable with them on this project.
So we're talking about the life and wellness of our firefighters in the station and you're willing to say that Riverside is good to protect them, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'm gonna hold you accountable to that.
So I make a motion, we accept the bid from Riverside. Support?
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley to approve station number one, construction fire alarm bid package. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. Zero six two, twenty twenty-two. Amendment to Troy Group contract to update the park's recreation and open space plan. And we have Mr. Reese, who's a member of our parks committee here, to address the board and answer any questions. Manager Swayze, you wanna give us the logistics?
Yeah, I'll just kick it off real quick. So the, as we all know, the Parks Committee and the staff has been working with Troyer Group on an update to our five-year Cascade Township Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. The work involved, survey that was sent out in the fall of two thousand twenty-one, review of our previous plan and existing conditions, numerous meetings with the park committee to form goals, objectives, as well as meeting with neighborhood communities to understand their future plan. So right now, based on our schedule, the goal is to bring the draft plan to the Parks Committee in September and then bring it before the township board at one of their October meetings. So near the beginning of this process, the township, if you recall, purchased the property on Y Cliff Drive. So there's been some general ideas presented on how to use the property, but the Parks Committee would like to create a master plan for the space. To assist with that, the Parks Committee requested the Troyer Group provide a proposed amendment to their contract to include additional services to create a master plan for the Y Cliff property. And we've included that proposal in your packet. So the proposal would include services to work with the Parks Committee and township staff to create one or two options for the proposed improvements and amenities of the property. The plans would be reviewed and revised to create a final master plan. And the services would also include a preliminary estimate of potential costs. So the proposed fee for the additional services is four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, which would bring the total contract amount to twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. So the Parks Committee reviewed the proposed amendment at their August sixteenth meeting and recommended approval to the township board. Supervisor Lesperin said, Mr. Reese, who is from both the Parks Committee and the Troyer Group, is here to answer any questions that you have. I will note that, you know, Mr. Reese is a member of the Parks Committee. However, this original bid award was done through an open bid process and it was determined that the Troyer Group's bid was the one that was most advantageous to the township. And of course, Mr. Reese abstained from all of the conversations regarding the RFP and the bid award.
And the amendment, yep, the entire process.
Yep.
Got a couple of comments, as I always do. This park up there was approved by the township board because the people up there wanted it. So I think that it's only with due diligence and rightful thinking that four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars is not much money, but it is a lot to the people that live on the other side of the river. So I recommend approval of it. Mr. Reese, make it a nice park.
Support your recommendation, Dan.
Any other comments or discussion? So that's a motion by trustee Shipley to approve the proposed amendment to item zero six two, twenty twenty-two, as stated, supported by trustee Kessel. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carried. And thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Reese. Appreciate it. Zero six three, twenty twenty-two. Possible contract for fall twenty twenty-two spongy moth survey. Manager Swayze?
Great, thank you. So we received our proposed agreement from Aquatic Consultant Services LLC to conduct spongy moth egg mass surveys to determine areas that will require aerial spraying for two thousand and twenty-three. So we've worked with Aquatic Consulting Services for the past twenty-five years to assist in the spongy moth aerial spraying program. If approved by the township board, the survey would be conducted this fall and the results of the survey would be utilized to determine spray block configurations for official aerial treatment of the high priority areas in the spring of two thousand twenty-three. So the last time we sprayed for gypsy moss was this past spring, spring of two thousand twenty-two, when we sprayed approximately four hundred and thirty acres. This was a below average volume of spraying for the township in the recent past as the spongy moth population in Cascade Township has been substantially controlled over the past two years by an aggressive spraying program. The follow-up survey to the fall indicated the two thousand twenty-two spraying program was a success. And according to the ACS biologist Neil Swanson, the township's spongy moth population remains under control. There are reports indicating that infestations around the state and untraded areas continue to contribute to mass defoliage. So we're not currently in a multi-year contract with Hamilton Helicopters, which is the other half of this program. And they're the applicator for the spongy moth program. A spray contract, if desired by the township board, can be negotiated and considered in the spring once the survey is completed and recommended spray areas and volumes are known. So I put a couple of things in your packet, including the proposed agreement with Aquatic Consulting Services, a spongy moth BTK information brochure published by the MSU Extension, as well as the spray map from this past year. So we've participated in the program in conjunction with Aquatic Consulting Services for twenty-five years. We've historically participated in the program because the acknowledgement of the devastating effect the spongy moth population could have on the canopy cover of the township. So our partnership with Aquatic Consulting Resources allows us to effectively allocate our financial resources to the program. The survey ensures that the aerial spray program effectively targets areas of infestation above set thresholds. And on several occasions, it saved us from unnecessarily spraying, which is the case most recently in two thousand thirteen, two thousand ten, and two thousand eleven, where the recommendation was to not spray at all. So the proposed contract with ACS is nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. It is included in the two thousand and twenty-two budget. The cost of the survey work is a two hundred dollar increase or two point two percent over the two thousand and twenty-one contract. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Man, is there any hope that it gets some of our neighbors on board with a spray program?
So I will say this past year, Ada Township did spray, which I was very impressed with. I also say that while we spent just shy of thirty thousand dollars spraying, they spent almost two hundred and forty thousand dollars spraying because they hadn't sprayed in the past. So Lowell Township had been on, they didn't spray last year. Caldonia Township's indicated that they're not spraying. Kentwood continues to spray. There's other entities not on our borders that.
Too bad we can't build a caterpillar wall and keep them all out. I make a motion that would go ahead with the survey. That's a first step in controlling this critter that I still prefer to call a gypsy moth, but because I can't pronounce a scientific name, I'm sorry. So that's my proposal to go ahead with the survey.
I support to approve the agreement with Aquatic Consulting.
And the aquatic consulting, just, just a discussion before we do the motion. Aquatic consulting, so this is, they're gonna do the survey? Are they the same, they also do the spraying?
No.
Okay, good. Are they affiliated?
So they're, they're not affiliated, but it's clear that they're pretty much the only game. We've searched at least the past ten years for a helicopter, another helicopter applicator for application. And all we've been able to do is come up with biplane. And biplane is a recommendation because the drift, the drift plan is an issue. You'll recall in the spring, we sent out a letter to everybody in the area and people that are in the spray area that are interested in not being in the spray area can actually be removed because the way the helicopter can spray with biplanes, that's not the, not the case with Zoom, Zoom, Zoom. So while they're not interrelated, pretty much all of the communities that Neil does surveying for choose to go with Hamilton helicopters for our applicators. There's a couple on the east side of the state that do biplanes because they're just spraying, you know, two thousand acres of, you know, forest land in Midland.
And they've done an exceptional job.
So that was a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald to approve the contract, the proposed contract for the twenty twenty-two Fall Spongy Moth Survey. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Zero six four, twenty twenty-two. Resolution recognizing Greenwich, Green Ridge Dream Team Foundation as a nonprofit organization. Andrew Swayze?
Thank you. So in order for nonprofit organizations to obtain charitable gaming licenses from the state of Michigan, they're required to obtain certification, certified resolution from the local governmental unit recognizing them as a nonprofit organization. So we received such a request from the Green Ridge Dream Team Foundation. In your packet, I included a proposed resolution recognizing them as a nonprofit organization as well as the organization's bylaws and five oh one C three tax exempt status letter from the IRS. So according to the foundation administrator, Chip Perschbacher, who is in attendance tonight, the Green Ridge Dream Team Foundation was founded on the intent of giving back to the community. They focus primarily on funding wishes of children who are suffering from life-threatening illnesses through the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Michigan and to support other children's charities. So their agents, employees voluntarily donate to the program. Plus, they raised money, holding a golf outing for several years. And this year will include a raffle for the first time, which is what they need the charitable gaming license for. And their outing is set for September. So we have reviewed the requests from the Green Ridge, Green Ridge Dream Team Foundation and determined that they meet all the qualifications necessary to be recognized as a nonprofit organization operating in the community. Though I'll note, the primary consideration on the part of the township is the five oh one C three tax exempt status, which the organization has. There's no financial impact on the township budget by passing the resolution. And as I mentioned, the Dream Team Administrator, Chip Perschbacher, is here to answer any questions.
Thank you for coming.
I got a question, not a question, a comment. We all know about the Shriners and the wonderful things that they do for the children and the St. Jude, but it's the smaller organizations like Green Ridge and the ones that we never hear about that really make the difference and push all those funds to where they're needed. So I have no problem with it. I've never heard of Green Ridge before tonight when I was reading the, the agenda. But I make a motion that we do support them and recognize them as a charitable organization.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel to approve the resolution recognizing Green Ridge Dream Team Foundation as a nonprofit organization. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Treasurer Paris.
Yes.
Trustee Norduck.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes, supervisor Lesperin.
Yes. Motion carried. Thanks for giving us the opportunity. Thanks for your work.
Thanks, Chip.
Zero six five, twenty twenty-two. Approval of delegates for the twenty twenty-two MERS conference.
Thank you. So the township participates in the municipal employees' retirement system of Michigan, otherwise known as MERS, to manage our retirement benefits for employees. Each year, MERS holds an annual conference for both officers, employees of the organization to learn more about our retirement programs. And we budget on an annual basis twenty five hundred dollars for two people to attend. As part of the process, the township has to delegate both an officer delegate and an employee delegate. And by designating, the delegates are able to vote on all business matters during the conference. So this year, we're recommending human resources director Katie Morowski as the officer delegate and senior accountant Liz Thompson as the employee delegate. As part of the process, the entire township staff was emailed asking for people interesting in attending the conference as the employee delegate, senior accountant Thompson was the only employee indicating a desire to attend. So I included the employee delegate forum, as well as the conference agenda in your packet. Human resources director Morowski serves as the point person for employees. They have questions about the MERS retirement system as an ideal candidate to attend the conference as the officer delegate on behalf of the township. Well, senior accountant Thompson serves as the key financial analyst for the township. And attending the conference, we've been official for her on both a personal and a professional level. As I mentioned, we budget twenty five hundred dollars for the employees. That's total twenty five hundred dollars total for two employees from the township to attend the conference. We have not spent the funds in the past two years as the conference was canceled and then virtual only due to COVID nineteen.
This is in Lansing.
It is, where is it? No, it's in Traverse City this year.
Several of our past employees and current employees were forced to go over to MERS. And it's important that our township keeps up on all the latest changes as it affects employees. And conferences like this are priceless when it comes to treating our employees correctly. So I therefore make a motion to approve it.
Support. So that's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by supervisor Lusprance to approve the delegates as stated for the twenty twenty two twenty twenty two MERS conference. All in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Zero six six twenty twenty two, consider renaming the museum gardens park in honor of Virgil Westdale, to renaming it the Virgil Nishimura Westdale Memorial Park. And this came up. Several members of the local American Legion post came up to me or approached me and as well as some members from the Cascade Christian Church. Virgil passed away at a hundred four this past year, was really well known. Everyone who knew him had wonderful things to say about him. He was when he died, the most highly decorated World War Two veteran. He was half Japanese and because of that, he was stripped of his pilot's license, demoted, but he still fought and was part of the troops that liberated Daco, a sub camp of Daco, the concentrate, the work camp. Worked for the airport for many years. And he didn't actually live in Cascade. I learned that later, but I guess he was very active in the church. I haven't met anyone who doesn't love him. He's even got a book. And everyone at the local barber shop has been pushing for this. So I originally was told, I took it to the parks committee, was told then to take it to the DDA. The DDA overwhelmingly supported it. They are covering the cost for a memorial plaque. I mentioned it to this board two weeks ago that it would be on the agenda. And it just so happened that we've got a heritage day coming up September tenth. The first time we did it was last year. And that was to do something because our Fourth of July had been canceled twice and we had, we wanted to do something. So we did Heritage Day where the wrestling coach at Forest Hill Central Central approached me totally separately, wanting to do like a beers on the bridge type thing like Ada and get something going. So it just worked out great, his help and his contacts to do Heritage Day. Well, Heritage Day is coming up for a second time. And it's at that exact same location. It's at the Cascade Christian Church that that park and the the old township hall. So there was a, it just worked to combine those the commemoration of the park with Heritage Day at the beginning of the festivities. So formally, the park being named that is up for approval by this board. That's the background and any discussion, questions, concerns, motions? Additions?
I got comments.
Comments?
This township is part of the community of the United States. Virgil Westdale gave all for the United States. He was not only a resident on another township, but he was actively involved in the church activities and committees in the American Legion Post here for life. I would think it would be a travesty to the American people and would be a travesty and criminal act for this township not to recognize a man of that stature. That's all I have.
I would just like to add, I I think your words are a little strong, John, and I would disagree. Well, I would disagree in that Mr. Nishimura was an exceptional individual and a tremendous veteran and a tremendous US citizen. And I mean, the accolades would never end. But there are a lot, I mean, should it be the John McCain part for what John McCain did for our country? I I think the plaque is very appropriate and I would support that. But Mr. Nishimura Westdale, and interesting, Nishi, that he changed his name because Nishi in Japanese is west. Mura is village. He couldn't translate it into English, Mr. West Village, so he chose West Dale, which is a valley, which I just thought was very clever of him to change his name and was very important at the time that he had an American name. But hi- his his contributions to the US are unquestionable. But he wasn't born in Cascade Township. He wasn't raised in Cascade Township. He didn't live in Cascade Township. He didn't make any significant contributions to Cascade Township. And I think it would be very appropriate for White Pigeon, where he grew up, to have a park named after him. I think it'd be very appropriate for the town in Indiana that he grew up to have a park named after him. I would prefer to see, and I would, I would certainly support a plaque for him because he was an exceptionally American. But I would like to see our parks, if we're going to name them, be for Cascade residents or people who have made significant contributions to Cascade. I love veterans. So if we're looking for a veteran, I would look to Claude Robinson, who who is also has so many accolades and he was a World War Two vet, highly distinguished, served this community by being on the planning commission, by being on the board, by being on the DDA. He he's donated tens of thousands of dollars to our library. He's put money back into this community. So I don't say one is is more valuable than the other. They're both extraordinary Americans. But to name a park, I would prefer to do it for Cascade resident who's contributed Cascade and is from Cascade and lives in our community. And that's why I think the plaque is very appropriate for Mr. Nishimura Westdale, but not the naming of the park. That's just.
Well, Tom, I I understand your point of view. However, we've got lots of parcels in this township. Claude, for instance, lived up on the other side of the river, did he not?
I I'm not sure.
Yeah, he did. He lived up in Cascade Woods area.
We've got a park that doesn't have a name.
There that doesn't have a name other than the White Cliff Park.
Bring that to us.
Down here, we simply call the museum park or the old standard oil company location park, if you remember back that far.
Was that formally, was that park formally named the museum gardens park?
I have no idea. I'd just call it a museum park. I.
So it's a park without a name next to a church where he attended for thirty years. He helped liberate Daco. Everyone who has tons of people at our local church and and at the local barber shop and our local American nature, all who serve love this guy and says he's a selfless public servant who he had someone come to his door. He found out a woman didn't have. She was a single mom. She didn't have money for things. He he, as part of his work, he had to visit her home. And then once he did that, he anonymously just sent her checks for several years until he, someone told him she eventually got married. Didn't say anything to anybody about it. And the American Legion guy who told me this told me after the fact, he learned about it from other people. And and we're going to sit here and say he didn't have a zip code. He he didn't actually pay taxes in Cascade. I think that's pretty, pretty small minded.
And and to to add to Tom's comments, Tom, I think that you've got a great idea. But I think that we ought to take an active, active role in recognizing our our citizens like Claude.
Hundred percent.
Instead of calling it the White Cliff Park or the Church on the Hill Park. Say, okay, here's the next one. Let's do some background on Claude. And he lived up in that area. He was a good neighbor to all those people up there. So let's recognize him in that area.
He still does live there, I think, right? I believe he does.
Yeah, and.
That's a great idea.
And and take care of Virgil Westdale in the church that he went to almost his entire life. That's my take.
Trustee. The outweighs the fact that he didn't formally reside in Cascade if one of the factors is significant contributions. Not, there's no residency requirement, although I I think that's an important consideration. But I don't think this opens the floodgates.
And and dating dating back to Tassels, they did a wonderful job for the community too.
It's funny, this has been floating out there for a long time and unanimously DDA went into, had these great ideas and they've got, they had the idea of doing a QR code that would be separate from the plaque that you can scan and then it takes you to his, to a link to his bio, all this cool ideas. They were so enthusiastic. This has been floating out there for a long time. I'm kind of surprised that several members of the board all of a sudden are stuck on the fact that he didn't have a cascade.
No, we haven't.
Residents.
DDA in a long time. We question them on all their decisions, but I think that they've got the right decision here.
I think we could expand our, be a little open minded, maybe for the Congressional Medal of Honor, World War Two. I don't think it'd be that easy going into Daco and.
There's a, there, we just bought another parcel of property that potentially we're going to be building into a park as well.
These are the kind of people that need to be remembered and honored and set examples for our kids. And the way to do that is by keeping their name alive. And if you have other people, Tom, bring them up because it shouldn't be an exclusive thing. It should be a positive thing for the community.
I recommended before, and of course, there was some conversation about it, but our administration building, we could keep calling it the Cascade Administration Building.
Give us some names.
Or we could get call of the Rob Behan Building or the Jack Lewis Building. All those guys made a significant contribution, not only to this community, this township, but to the entire area.
Hundred percent. We've got plenty of opportunities. Haven't seen a lot of movement in this area. Clerks Slater?
I think the story, his story is amazing. I wish I could have met him. I think what he did was really great for our country. And I think it's a great idea to put the plaque there honoring him with all the fanfare that that includes. And doing it on Heritage Day, I think is a nice idea. I I personally don't think that we should name parks after people who never lived here, never voted here. I know that he went to that church right next door for years and years, but I do think it kind of opens up Pandora's box, maybe to not have that criteria and granted that criteria is not clearly stated in the policy, but I do think that being a resident should be a pretty big factor. So I'm not in favor of renaming the park. I'm in favor of the plaque.
You know how you don't open a Pandora's box? You have a board of trustees of seven that make sure it's not an open floodgate. And you do it by case by case. So you would prefer that it stays the museum gardens park informally without a name?
At this point in time. Actually thought that was its formal name.
I'm going to open up the floodgate here. I make a motion that the park is renamed after Virgil Westdale.
But but the official name is I'm sorry, was it the?
Virgil Nishimura Westdale Memorial Park.
Thank you, Tom. I stand corrected.
I just wanted to make sure, because his Japanese heritage was so important to this story. So I want to make sure that.
Well, he persevered through all of the prejudices back during that time and afterwards, you know, so yeah, you're absolutely right, Tom. That that background or that name adds to the story. You're right.
Support.
That's a motion by trustee Shipley to formally name the the park kitty corner from Tuffy, the Virgil Nishimura Westdale Memorial Park. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Treasure Pierce. Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, no supervisor Lusprance.
Yes, motion carried. Article ten discussion, any items? I have one if no one has anything. I received an email from a business operator about the termination of the bus service over in the industrial loop. And I think he made an important point. That if alternative methods of transportation such as wheels to work are available, which they are, it would have been appropriate for our letter to have noted those. And I think that some additional research and additional communications with those businesses would be appropriate and helpful.
I concur. You know, even though there may only be a few people that use that bus, it's important to them. And it's almost as important as it is to our residents to watch our spending. It's important for us to support those businesses down along Thirty Sixth Street with any information that we can.
Here, here. Any other items for discussion? I had a question about the pathway and I owe a resident a callback. I didn't get to it yet. I don't know specifically what the question was. Had to do with the Burton, Burton Street Overpass, I think.
Again?
No, well, I didn't know. I mean, I get all the reasons behind it. It's a cost benefit analysis. I personally had, I just think it's kind of funny. There was no, I didn't know that Kentwood was expanding their widening their paths to kind of ironic. It would have been helpful to know.
The road, yeah.
Yeah, nobody told me.
Huge expansion there.
You think that that would be information that a board member.
I have no problem if Kentwood wants to split that bridge across their their expense. Right.
I'm just saying, as a, as a, as a voting member of the Cascade Board of Trustees, it would have been helpful to know. I would have appreciated knowing that if that information was available. And we're having our first pathway committee meeting. It's open to the public September first at ten AM, at the township offices.
Can I coattail on on something that you said too?
Absolutely.
If if Kentwood is improving Burton Street on their side, it may force the county to rethink, county slash state, to rethink doing that, redoing that bridge. That could be a good thing.
That is a huge burden, financial burden to put on just a township, even though there's a need. I couldn't agree with you more. And it's it's a definitely.
They went right up to their property line with their new pathway.
I thought it was funny to be the supervisor and learn by driving down there. Beating a dead horse, sorry. Any other comments, questions? Public comments, article eleven. Oh, I have one more. Strategic planning can, the workshop at the last meeting. I heard from some residents, and this is similar to the budget workshop session. I get that they weren't well attended in the past or it makes sense to, as it's a workshop. But I don't think those should be held at the township anymore because those residents who did want to follow along couldn't hear the audio. So no fault of anybody else, just going forward, let's make sure that all board meetings, workshop or not, are here at the Wizard Center where we're set up for audio. Sorry, public comments.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Holcomb, thirty four fifteen Glenstone Court, Cascade, Michigan. Just wanted to know what the update is on Eagle Creek. It's been like a month.
So we've unleashed the full force of our attorney now. We've basically given them the go ahead to do what they need to do. So they're looking at it from three different angles. Of course, still trying to get in contact with the the property owner through their attorney. It's been radio silence from them. We've asked them to prepare us documents on what our ability is to proceed. ability is to proceed specifically on the material that's bringing, being brought into the protected wetland. And then to maybe contact people that we don't know about in Eagle because the response from, we've gotten from Eagle has been non-existent, so.
Did we direct counsel to, if possible, contact Eagle on our behalf?
Can we find him, ticket him on a daily basis?
No, not right now.
We've, we've asked the attorney to tell us specifically what we can do, right? So we've had a lot of discussions with him, but we kind of need some written documentation on what we can actually, what we can actually accomplish.
And they'll be getting back with us within a couple of weeks, hopefully.
I'm hoping it's less than a couple of weeks, but I think that's certainly a reasonable expectation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Richardson, thirty-four thirty-eight North Alpe Crest Court. I just want to comment on the strategic plan draft and review process, and I, I think that's a good process to go through in terms of getting community input, you know, clarifying, you know, the goals that we're going through and you know, reading through it, one thing that I took note of was under transportation and safety, priority three, continue partnerships with the Kent County Road Commission to address safety concerns at key intersections. And task one is prioritize intersection enhancements at key locations where traffic accidents occur most frequently. And some of these intersections may include, and there's eight listed, the last three are Burton Street and Spalding, twenty, or Burton between Patterson and Kraft. And, yeah, so and Twenty-Eighth Street to Kraft slash Burton and Kraft. So in terms of the, what the strategic plan is showing, it may show you that you might want to revisit the decision you made on February twenty-third not to support the bridge over I ninety-six that in fact, the voters of the community voted to support by sixty-five percent to thirty-five percent in twenty eighteen.
Which, I'm sorry, what are you referring to? The pedestrian bridge over Burton?
Yes.
Over one ninety-six.
Over I ninety-six.
Four million dollar bridge.
Wait, but wait, you're saying the, the public, the majority of residents voted for that?
That was one of the projects that was advertised to the residents as something that would happen with the millage passed in twenty eighteen. Is that correct, Ben?
That's correct.
Yeah, you just have to be careful with your wording on how you, to how you portray that, because I don't think that's, I mean, I get it, you're.
Okay, I get it, the, the community did not vote for a specific project. They don't, but they didn't say, we're going to do, you know, we vote for this project, not that one, whatever. They voted for the package, the plan, and it's understood that the plan doesn't always come out exactly as proposed. But what you voted down in February was what was presented to the voters and what they approved in twenty eighteen.
One minute.
So I'm saying that now you have a strategic plan coming up that renews the focus on that area and the safety concerns on that area. And I hope that you have maturity to look at it with what's best for the township, what the people want and not to get caught up in, you know, a particular agenda about, you know, who lives where, whether Kentwood is part of America or not, and whether they deserve to be safe when they travel to Cascade or not. I hope that you have maturity to, you know, follow the strategic plan, follow the process and follow the wishes of the community.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have someone on Zoom, one second.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, and Mr. Hughes.
Oh, are they together?
No, they, well, we don't know.
Oh, because I just put him, I just put him on.
Okay, can you wait, you stay up, you know, you could stay up, but just, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Sorry, Chris, are you there? I unmuted you.
Good evening, Chris Nordike, thirty-seven twenty Oak Bluff Drive. Just making a, a simple observation on the draft resolution to rename the Museum Garden Park to Virgil Westdale Memorial Park, the second page states, whereas Mr. Westdale served the Cascade Community with honor as a member of the Cascade Community Church for thirty plus years. I would suggest that that should say, whereas Mr. Westdale served the Cascade Community with honor as a member of the Cascade Christian Church for thirty plus years. That's all I have.
Good catch, thank you. That's page two of the draft resolution?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. You need to make a note of that, Ben?
Yep.
Mr. Hughes?
Good evening, Jeff Hughes, seven-two-five-zero Redbud Lane, I hope all is well with you. Tonight I'd like to talk about deer car collisions. Keep it on topic with deer. I, I think that we are downplaying the seriousness of such accidents. Indeed, the topic seems to come up more as a solution to overpopulation than the actual danger such accidents pose. Fact is that deer vehicle collisions can be extremely dangerous and even fatal. Let me give you some context, an adult doe weighs an average of a hundred fifty pounds and an adult buck weighs somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred pounds. That is the equivalent of three to four sacks, fifty pound sacks of cement. Imagine them colliding with those three or four bags of cement all at once at anywhere between forty-five and fifty-five miles per hour, which have speed limits of the major roads around Burton Park. If lucky, those bags of cement will hit the vehicle's body, the car will undoubtedly be totaled, but the passengers at least would be safe. However, the collision would be so much worse if those sacks came through the windshield. There is no question that a hundred fifty to two hundred pound deer can come through the windshield and may approach. I, I took a couple of photos off of the internet.
This in Cascade?
No, honestly, I don't know whether there has ever been a deer vehicle accident like this in Cascade. I do though believe that we do not want to wait around until there is such an accident, accident before taking action. Are the deer alone to blame? Of course not, drivers need to slow down and be more careful. That was a conversation I had with trustee Nordike the other day. However, the fact remains the Cascade Road handles at least twenty thousand vehicles on any given weekday. And Thorn Apple River Drive handles at least eighty-five hundred more vehicles.
One minute.
Or at least that is what the township's own street study concluded back in two thousand fourteen. I suspect that Leroe Way Lake, which is the third main road that surrounds Burton Park, handles another four thousand to five thousand cars on any given workday. The point is simply this, that there are just too many drivers on those roads who will still speed and who will still do the multitude of things that we shouldn't be doing while driving. And therefore deer vehicle collisions will persist no matter what effort is put into safety.
Twenty-five seconds.
Let me close by reminding the board that that horrible bicycle car accident at the corner of Cascade Road in Leroe Way Lake. No matter how obvious the danger and no matter the multitude of warning signs put up, people continued to roll through that walkway there without stopping and looking. Yet nothing was done to address the clear danger and that poor little boy was killed, and that was so sad. I recognize that there will always be, may I add a few more minutes, please, thank you. I recognize that there will always be the risk of such a similar tragic accident occurring so long as there are any deer in the area, and there's going to be deer in the area, there's no question about that, we don't want to eradicate the, the deer population. However, that is not, and I want to repeat, that is not an excuse for not reducing that risk to something that far more acceptable than what we have right now. There are just too many deer car collisions in this area, particularly around Burton Park. And I believe that reducing that risk through reducing the deer herd is the only responsible thing the township can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? Have you been to the road commission about putting up some deer crossing signs in some of our sweet spots down Cascade?
I haven't, and I think that's a good idea, I mean, I, I am for everything that we can do to prevent this, but when you have such traffic on that, you know, people are going to ignore that and they're still going to leap out. I've almost hit a couple deer and I, I know that they're dangerous, yeah.
There's a couple of sweet spots there where they cross quite frequently and.
Sure, well, you know, surprisingly though, the one that, that was most concerning to me was down along the river, just beyond Cascade Road going north. And I'd never encountered them there before, I guess it was down there getting water. But you're right, I mean, close to where I live, I'm right between Burton Park and the river, so their cars are on there all the time.
Would you be willing to go down and see if you can get some signs?
I'm willing to contact them.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Want our help?
Yeah, I imagine that they're probably going to listen to you a little bit more than I, but sure.
Ben, maybe.
You show up at ten of their meetings, they might listen.
But they have great feedback because effective signs and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I don't want to deflect though, but in, in all due respect, sure, putting up signs is going to help, but it's not going to solve the problem. The problem is, is that there's too many deer. And we've got to realize that, that the deer population has to be reduced, this is just another reason, I think it's probably the most important reason. I mean, you look at those pictures and can imagine a child being in the front seat of a car and getting hit by that. That's just unacceptable, and again, you can't eliminate that risk, you can eliminate it, but you certainly can reduce it. And there is no excuse for having a population the size that we have and with the attendant risk that it has among all the other reasons why we shouldn't have so many deer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Putting you to work.
Manager Swayze, did the cornerstone crew pick up the batteries?
They did pick up the batteries, so.
Or I should say, what's the status?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they picked them up earlier this week. He mentioned that, you know, with the students being back in school now, that this is going to be their first project, so anticipating the trail cams will be going up either later this month or early next month. We'll make sure the department are part of that, so we know kind of where they're at. And then the dealer do their business, they won't really review the pictures until, you know, the writing season is complete. And then I anticipate we'll have a report back from them first quarter of two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Any other comments? Article twelve, manager comments, Andrew Swayze.
Talked a lot tonight, so I won't bore you with other items, just wanted to promote a couple upcoming events, so we have our Metro Cruise tomorrow, four-thirty to eight-thirty, if you're a car connoisseur or you like music or you like food trucks, come down and check it out, weather's supposed to be good. As supervisor Esperance mentioned, then we have Heritage Day, which will take, be taking place at the Cascade Christian Community Church property September tenth.
That community, Cascade.
Church, I don't know why I keep putting community in there, I apologize. Cascade Christian Church from five o'clock until nine o'clock on September tenth. So if everybody comes and checks that out, and wanted to let the board know that our bonds were sold today. So our effective interest rate was three point five six percent, which is about ten basis points lower than what had been modeled, save just about ten thousand dollars a year on the so, still a lot of paperwork that's got to be done before the final for the final check is cut into our, our accounts, but money is there now, so Triangle should be back in front of the township board at the next meeting with all of the remaining bids. Keep our fingers crossed that they follow what the current bids are going, and we should have a project starting later this month.
Thank you. Isn't, and there's an event tomorrow, I think at Peace, or I'm sorry, Burton Park. A working day.
Oh, yeah, bittersweet.
Bittersweet.
Same time as.
Yes, so if you don't want to go to the metric use, go to Burton Park and help pull out the problematic invasive bittersweet.
Take a deer while you're there.
Or two. Um, board comments?
I got one, as always. Thanks for coming, Mr. Perschbacher, Mr. Hughes, Mr. Holcomb and Mr. Richardson, appreciate all your input, because what you input is what makes it better for all of us. And Jim, did we get all of our bonds sold because of our AAA rating?
Well, it didn't, it helped our rate, I imagine.
All that, all that AAA rating is because of the good things that the residents do, the good things that Jim and Ken and, and Ben do and watching where the nickels and dimes go, that's all I have, thank you. Well, thank you, everybody in Zoom.
It must be a little, I, we really appreciate you coming and it feel a little awkward because we sit and stare and you guys come up with the same issues every time, but it, we really do appreciate it, it does help, and thanks for your patience. The bureaucratic wheel.
Oh, it's terrible, I'll tell you, sitting here and watching how long it takes for things to happen, it'll drive you nuts, it actually will. I make a motion for German.
Did anyone else have any other comments or questions, though?
Russian and John.
The motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald to adjourn, all in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried, returned, thank you.
Hey, Jim, remember the eleven and twelve o'clock, the planning committee?